... As it's impossible we'll be there.
... About 10 virgins of fatherless experience in the other day without the thanks for that. Our father, he has, he was not leaving, and they found his family, but he was always reacting to his father's suit, their love, and much of our family longed on the Lord's word to them before. I pray that the billions, the good heart of the United States of America and the Republic of which stands on the nation and the God and the individual liberty and justice are all.
That fan is very loud. I don't know. Thanks.
All we've got in motion, uh, seven, we're through those, all of the favor, as you want them. Okay, um, old business, we have none. And new business? We have, uh, is RC nineteen thousand fifty-four, um, for a rezon from agricultural to rural residential. And we're now open to leaving on this, for public viewing. Um, I'm just, we're close to the offices.
Yes, ma'am. This is a two hundred and seventy-eight, kind of four-inch parcel located off of Big Ridge Road. It also has access off of Canyon Creek Way. The parcel ID is zero fourteen, zero twenty-two. It's currently zoned agriculturally. The request is to rezon property to rural residential for a eighty-three lot subdivision. In qualities are three acre lots, or a little bit larger lot subdivision. The request is for rural residential. Doesn't seem that, uh, the acreage apartment for state residential is three acres, and that area of the county is primarily rural in nature. The comprehensive plan rural development area, um, rural residential is the most dense zoning that's allowed in that character area. So since their request was already three acres, um, I recommend that we do a state residential for this one. Subject to y'all's recommendation. Other than that, the property is surrounded by other large parcels. Uh, there is some development in the area. If y'all look at number eight, other conditions, it gives, um, other explanation as to the county water and county fire, and it's also a letter from the nine-one-one director behind here, as well as, um, the water director about water service. Other than that, um, the additional comments or additions to this memo, hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file, the video recording of the planning commissions hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony. In order for this information to be made part of the record, it shall be available for the board of commissioners to review. And staff has recommended that this application be approved under the state residential zoning classification. When we were looking at it, I would say that it may be worthwhile to have a discussion on a central water system, so that when county water does make it out there, there is something to connect to. But that is a discussion that you can have with the developer at that time. If y'all have any other questions, send the applicants here, and I'll give my best answer in addition ahead.
As you still work there, that you said for Talking Rock, um, Creek Falls?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Cameron Klein. I'm with the law firm of Miles Sensor and Talent. I'll be here, uh, on behalf of the applicant, Talking Rock, tonight. Um, we have a PowerPoint, pretty brief, I don't know how to control it.
Cover me, we've got it.
Over here, okay.
We need to change slide.
All right, thank you. So we have up there, and I don't want my back to anybody. We have the, uh, tax, uh, tax parcel over here. So like staff said, uh, we have a two hundred and seventy-eight, approximately acres. It's currently ag. Uh, we're looking for, uh, in our application, we're looking for rural residential after reading, uh, staff's report and recommendation of a state, uh, residential. I don't believe we have any problem with that. We have, uh, the three acre minimum lots already, um, so I don't believe there's any objection to staff's recommendation of ER. It is eighty-three, uh, single-family residential lots, uh, as the site plan currently shows. If you hit the next slide, please. Uh, this is just a survey of that property, um, that specifically is the, uh, is subject of this application tonight, uh, two hundred and seventy-eight acres. Next slide, please. Uh, that's for everybody else. So that's just, we wanted to show, um, the surrounding areas. Uh, you can see all that RR up there, and the upper left corner, uh, and right corner, the UR at the top, yes, R, and then there's a little bit of ag, uh, over there on side. So what we're requesting, um, is what's already up there right now. Uh, we want to bring this in, uh, compatibility with this area. Like I said, we're, we're looking for three acre lots, so large lots up there, uh, in that area of the county. Next slide, please. And this is the site plan. Uh, I actually have it on the map here, you can see as well. Um, so that's showing the, the three acre lots. Uh, it's the two hundred and seventy-eight acres, uh, that's subject of this, uh, application tonight, uh, but that upper, let's see, upper left corner, um, you can see there's a note, uh, there's forty acres that's already zoned, RR, uh, that will be incorporated into this development. So we have the two seventy-eight that we're looking to rezon, uh, but we already have forty that is already zoned, uh, that'll give us, uh, access out there onto, uh, Big Ridge Road. The roads are proposed to be private roads, uh, maintained by, uh, the association, uh, once that's established. Uh, the water, I saw staff's, uh, comment about a central water facility. Um, right now, the proposal is all these lots will be on well, septic, um, so we know that there's no county water up there, uh, so we're proposing the well, uh, and septic. So that is the proposal that we have. I know we'll have some comments. Uh, we've had, uh, one comment to, uh, to my office so far. The owner of, uh, parcel, uh, sixty-one and sixty is kind of the right-hand corner of Dickinson, um, that ironically is a, a judge in Forsyth County, which my firm has some, uh, experience with. He had some concerns about the screen buffer. Um, we, we assured him that all buffers are going to be combined with, um, and, uh, yeah, I think he had some comments about, uh, potential mobile homes. We sure, we know that that's, are not allowed in any of these categories, ER or RR, so it will not be even mobile homes. Um, and topography on those lots specifically, um, it's a high grade, near the back of the lots, so those lots would probably, or the homes on those lots will likely be located closer to the screw that pulls that right back there. All of a sudden, we're gonna have some comments, and hopefully I can address those tonight. Please let me know if you guys have any questions.
So, so who said private roads? But yet in the application, that's when it talks about that the road in the future might be deeded over to the county, which is what?
Well, we're, uh, I'll tell you, we're proposing private roads with a date that'll be maintained by the association.
Paved roads?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Paved county spec?
Yes, sir.
Your letter of intent says all the developers' interior streets and driveways will be publicly owned and maintained, uh, and then goes on to say, uh, the applicant intends to dedicate internal subdivision roads to Dickens County.
I, I believe that was an, an error in drafting that, so I'll, I'll clear it right now, and I'll say our, our site plan calls for the private roads, um, so, so we'll defer to the site plan on that one.
So, so private roads, give counties cap with appropriate right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
Why, why are we, do you want to see those over and, and have a mandatory responsibility to that, other than the individual property owners?
I, I don't know if it's necessarily an objection to the county taking over. Uh, I do have, uh, the developer with me, Mr. Davis here, I think he may be able to shed some light on that.
Yeah, I think the water, uh, the water's like a mile and a half away.
I'm talking about roads.
Oh, the roadside. You know, 'cause we're building them, I mean, it's right beside Talking Rock Creek Resort, which we're doing some cabins in there trying to get that thing going, you know. I, I have no objection, I mean, whatever's, uh, best for the county, or whatever y'all want to do, I'd be.
I mean, I've seen where you, unless the covenants are really, really tight. Individual property owners would dream on these thinking roads, come to a real estate where down the road, and it's not extended to me. You take five or ten years down the road, and the roads can be repaired, whatnot?
Uh, we, we certainly understand that, and like I said, I, I don't believe it's an objection to the county taking possession of the roads if that is what staff would recommend or what the, the, uh, the planning commission would prefer, uh, we would be okay with that as well. Again, it's not an objection, it's just kind of what we have on the site plan. Um, so if staff and the PC or one of the either would prefer, uh, dedication to the county of the roads, built to the county standards, um, appropriate right-of-way, and all, and all necessary, uh, requirements, I, I don't believe there's an objection from us.
What would, what would the county preference be? I mean, rules are, they're well, respect.
I think they'll always, you know, as soon as a pothole appears five years down the road, they're gonna be petitioning us to take care of it anyway, um, as long as they are built to county spec. And then, once they submit a letter of petition to the county saying that they want the roads taken over, the county goes out and inspects the roads, they would then have to deed the roads over, and once they deed them over, the board of commissioners would have to vote on it, whether or not to even accept that into the road system or not. So there is still a significant process behind that, but if they start off with private roads at county spec, you know, that puts us all in a good position, I think. And may I clarify something? The mobile homes are allowed in all of our residential zoning districts unless there's a zoning condition or a covenant that prohibits them.
So, so what did the fellow say? Have they been drafted yet?
They have not been drafted, no, second. There won't be no mobile homes. This is gonna be cabins, more of a second home, what we're looking at, and just people that, you know, live in probably fifty-fifty, I would say, that lives there full-time, and then have some second homes on the river, got some mountain views on the property.
Well, you're, you're the developer, you're just gonna, you're just gonna, you're gonna sell the lots, are you gonna?
I'm gonna sell the lots, and then I'm a builder too, so I, you know, build it for them, but they still have their option to use whoever they want to. They're not locked in the using thing.
I mean, I was just saying, if I was coming along, and I was looking at one of those lots, and I was thinking about buying it, but the aspect that the county has the responsibility for maintaining it as opposed to me getting everybody else together, I think that would be a positive marketing tool for you in selling the lots.
You saw, as far as taking, taking care of the roads?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so tell me about the water. You're, you're gonna put, how many, three, three wells? How deep are the wells in that area now?
Probably two hundred and fifty.
Is the water source down?
It's still good? Yeah, I've already had it put down, and septic, yes, sir.
And in what is your position about that, that what the county has suggested with respect to a, a water system that would have one well as opposed to multiple?
Well, you know, there's water, there's a six or eight inch main, that's one mile from there, which is in the Talking Rock Creek Resort. If we ever brought it up there, we could always run the water service later, for no problem, you know. That eventually, if it actually comes up to the road. And a lot of people might wait two or three years to build, and then we can bring the water up there, till then, you know, I don't think everybody would be attacking it, build right-of-way, uh, as far as buying the lots, you know, and kind of just.
The water authority does not, the, from them indicates that they would have to update that, um, water main that comes in, is it from local, the last?
There's, there's a water main that's right up, right on the side.
There's one there, but they're saying that it's, possibly not going to be large enough to serve that.
There's one on the Talking Rock Creek Resort that's supposed to be. That's why we just figured out wells and septic tanks on every lot. We wouldn't really count on the water service, we're just gonna let every homeowner do their own way and on their own setting.
Eighty-three septic tanks on Talking Rock Creek?
There's only twenty lots on the creek.
That's another thing, too, those lots don't look as if, on the creek there, don't really look as if they're three acres.
They are, parts of that things went through that.
No, I was just looking at how much smaller they were than the other lots, you know?
They're more narrow, they're more narrow and long. Yeah, every, every lot, all this parcel will be three acres.
Excuse me, with that being the wells being dug, you're?
There's a time later for public.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, I don't see the road right-of-way listed on your site plan.
You're gonna come in out Big Ridge Road?
The, the road right-of-way within the. Those lots are ending there.
See, the main entrance off Big Ridge Road?
The, the width of the road is throughout, what, what, what is the right-of-way for the road?
It's twenty-two feet.
Commissioner, if you look at note number four.
If you put right-of-way with a twenty-foot asphalt, so that needs to be spammed.
Well, that's the whole, I mean, what you grade is sixty, but when you break it down, when you do the, the curves and all the water flow, you get down to a twenty, twenty foot, ten foot on each side, or in and out.
And is the forty acre tract that's already zoned, RR, what are you gonna do with that?
That's where we had to get that, to get the main entrance off of Big Ridge Road to get into the property. So we, we worked it out with them to sell us forty of their fifteen-hundred. They went, went ahead and dealt with us and gave us the forty acres, so we could put the main entrance off of their forty to get back into the, the mountain views and the river and everything. 'Cause it really, there was, the land really doesn't work anything without them working with us.
Any other questions? Tom?
Tom, yes, ma'am.
Any more questions?
Have you talked to the vendor, anybody out there reading the Sweet Ridge Road?
They'll have. You know, it's right, where this land is, it's coming right into the Talking Rock Creek Resort. You know, it's all right there together, so, but I mean, it's all, I mean, all the roads are pretty, pretty solid, all the way back from fifty-three, coming all the way back there, 'cause I'm doing cabins already in the Talking Rock Creek Resort.
Put two hundred more cars on that road, yes, they'll have that.
This property, I didn't have a chance to get down there, where Big Ridge Road goes into like a four-way thing in Damascus, it's right ahead of Damascus, is this toward Black Knoll, or is this toward that?
Turn to the right. When you get to Damascus and Big Ridge, turn to the right on Big Ridge, go down towards Macedonia, that's just towards Talking Rock Creek Resort. It's three miles down there, and it's, it doesn't face on Big Ridge, it's off, and the notice of hearing sign is actually a half mile off of Big Ridge Road.
Any other question? Okay, now we have several members of the public who have, um, requested to speak. You're allowed ten minutes, and that's a total of all on, so you can have one person speak for you, or each of you can speak for a couple of minutes, so tell me something to add. Shane Carter.
Excuse me. Uh, I'm a, uh, owner, uh, directly across the creek, up towards the end of property, Water's Edge Lot One. Uh, I've also got some of the other residents, Lot Ten, Lot Eleven, so we've got, we've done it. So my concern about this entire area is that it's actually, by Georgia's standards, an imperal priority watershed. And the topography of this area, you've got extremely steep areas, you've got shears that run down through here. When they get to a point where the residents do begin to build, are you gonna be building all the residency?
We need to do a direct request.
Oh, I'm sorry, is the builder planning on doing all the building on the lots themselves, or are they gonna let the owners of the lots have their own builders come in?
I think you better, like, let's both wait.
Both ways, okay, thank you. My concern is, some of the most steep areas, and some of the shears, are gonna require that the residents actually, if I'm not mistaken on the standards, have two septic tanks, are gonna need redundant systems that are in place there, and, uh, there's, being the watershed that it is, it's got about five thousand feet of actual Talking Rock Creek frontage that runs around the corner, five thousand feet, there's a lot of watershed that's gonna have to be kept up with, it's a trout stream, we don't wanna see anything coming downstream towards us. Also, through the center, through the core of the property, there is a stream, um, it's not labeled by name, but through the, if you look, uh, almost right in half, the little squiggly line, there's some dotted lines, some dashes that outline it. And that center core of the property, that stream feeds directly down into the Talking Rock Creek as well, and, and again, the concern would be, has there been a proper hydrology study? Has someone, has a certified, uh, engineer been in there to, to look at that property and to see that, that all the impermeable surfaces are gonna drain the right way? I mean, just putting a bunch of marks on a map and calling them a subdivision doesn't make sense to me when, and it's, it's just gonna be a huge amount of water, there's gonna be a septic situation we're gonna have to look at, uh, for future studies, you know? An environmental impact study, I think, would probably be in order, particularly because it is an imperal priority watershed. They're not gonna be on the city's water system, they're gonna be pulling groundwater up, eighty-three wells pulling water right out of the ground. I mean, it might look like a good thing on paper, but I don't think that it can be. You know, beyond that, I think I'm gonna yield my time to anybody else that wants to speak.
First of all, Justin, can you address any of the?
If yes, are you ready? The rezoning is just the first step of the process. When this goes out to soil erosion, and it goes degrading, and they submit their plans, a hydrology study would be required for something of this size, generally, um, that's something that gets submitted to, uh, the state.
So the concerns that you raised in a broad sense will be addressed at that, at that point?
And the Soil and Water Conservation Commission will actually review the plans for the subdivision, if and when it were to be approved and get settled out.
I have two concerns. The first is the density of the property. You've got three acres minimum, eighty-three lots, that's two hundred and forty-nine of the two hundred and seventy-eight acres, which leaves less than ten percent for roads, right-of-way, and infrastructure. And I haven't had the opportunity to figure out the linear feat of roads on that, but I respectfully submit that you're not gonna be able to achieve ten percent of common area with that density of lots. So the question is, what in fact are you gonna do with the roads? If you're gonna build them to county specifications with sixty-foot right-of-way and twenty-foot pave, now you're over your ten percent, so you can't have a three-acre lot minimum, which is the state requirement. And so it would seem that the answer to that question is to reduce the number of lots, understand the consequences that has to the developer, but that plus the concerns raised by this gentleman about the environmental impact on Talking Rock Creek. Eighty-three septics, gravity is the law, stuff flows downhill. Downhill is Talking Rock Creek. There are provisions with the Planning and Development Commission to provide for environmental impacts and hydrology studies. At this stage, you don't need to wait to determine. And if in fact what we're gonna have, there's a quite significant question about whether there's going to be private roads, county roads, the density of the lots, the environmental impact on Talking Rock Creek, I respectfully submit that it might behoove the developer to address these concerns, make a resubmission to the commission with a set of HOA, proposed HOA covenants, that provides this commission and the county commission with an assurance of what in fact will actually be done out there.
Marshall Lawrence?
I have a property on Talking Rock Creek. My biggest concern. Talking Rock Creek is the only recreation creek in Bexar. It's the only creek where cats can play, swim, canoe, and fishing, throughout Talking Rock. Talking Rock is awesome, and very upstream blast. It's the most beautiful creek in all of New Georgia. I know them, 'cause I can hear a lot. I can hear every stream and river throughout Georgia. Talking Rock is a Marshall River. People come from everywhere just to see it. But they wanna see it as it is. It's safe for children, it preserves them for children. Give them a beautiful place to go.
I think that's the only respect that we have to state. Would you care to respond to the comments?
Yes, ma'am. For, in regards to some of the concerns that have been raised, uh, here, uh, we would be happy to meet with the neighbors, um, we'd be happy to try and address, uh, some of these concerns, um, that, uh, that the county and the neighbors have. So if, if, if the commission would be open to a thirty-day postponement, uh, we would like to take that opportunity to meet with neighbors and, uh, to try and... that opportunity to meet with neighbors and to try and address these concerns that have been raised tonight.
Justin, what's your reaction to that?
You can do a motion to table, motion to table the application and then pick, or not to table, but to postpone to a definite date would be your motion. And then pick it up in the March, planning, have it on the March agenda to address.
I didn't see you over there, Phil.
Sorry, I was running a little late there.
There are four schedules for March already.
So the state's got to address Marshall's concerns about the creek. The state's got certain specs, like is it supposed to be fifty feet or something like that?
It's fifty for a trout stream.
Marshall, that trout stream? Have you ever caught a trout in there?
But I do live on a trout stream. Fifty feet, I know we're near enough. I got my cell phone, I show you pictures. When I destroyed this creek, there's one house, one house destroyed the whole entire creek system. Fifty feet, what Pecan County needs to realize, fifty feet, I can't be further on mountain ground. I'm not worth a foot on steep ground. Steep ground should be five thousand feet. Don't even leave inside. Because we all know how fast water, when it starts running out of mountain, you've seen it, you've seen the roads, what's in there? You've seen the lakes, they turn to mine. Why? Because the counties are not strict enough. It's all about elevation. If you're living flat, you can build pretty close. And if you're talking about Talking Rock Creek, where every fight's just a bluff, trade with name, you can't get nowhere near. And I'm calling out, you can't set a footage, you gotta, you gotta look at the light of the lamp. From the point it starts dropping, you gotta stop all construction well beyond that point. Not at that point, well beyond holding ponds, reservoirs to slow this water line. If you don't, you will destroy the whole river.
Yeah, there's only twenty lots on the river. The other sixty-three is behind it, there's mountain views and everything. We will do everything the county requires. Test, Mark Chastain, I'm sure y'all heard the name in here, I mean, he draws it to, we give it a flyover, they do the topography. We'll make sure all the water, sewer and septic system is done to y'all's specs. But there's only twenty lots on the river and they're not like Talking Rock Creek Resort that's like this. Their elevation is so much laid out much, these houses will be a hundred to a hundred and fifty. Hundred and fifty feet. Hundred and fifty, probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet off the river. We're not even talking about building fifty feet on the river. And there's only twenty of them that's on the river. So, but like I say, we will do everything to y'all's standards in the county to make this a win-win for everybody. You know, we won't, never try to do anything that ruins the Talking Rock Creek, because I'm building cabins in the resort next door to it, you know?
So your offer is to meet with all interested parties, hear their concerns, hear if come to some compromise on issues that can be, some may be and some may not, but address the issue of whether or not there'll be private roads versus public roads?
Yes, sir. That's what I propose.
And revisit it in the March meeting or is it due soon?
I think we could be able to get it back on the March one.
So we have a large meeting for all maybe next month, it may be the following month. I think you can get on their office and how they can schedule it.
It's up to y'all, whatever y'all...
We would request the March one.
Very briefly.
Yes, ma'am, very briefly. I would just like to point out once again, they're talking about twenty lots that are actually on the Talking Rock Creek. But if you look up the core of the property, where the other stream runs that empties into Talking Rock, you're gonna have another twenty or thirty properties on, if you're counting both sides. Again, where the dashed lines are, right up the center of the core of the property, you've got these dashed lines, that's a stream. You've got properties on both sides of the stream that are gonna be feeding directly into that, that's gonna feed directly into Talking Rock Creek. There's a lot more than twenty properties that are gonna be dumping into this, a lot more.
Chairman, I have to move that, sorry Clayton.
Okay.
No, it's fine, you are in.
I was gonna move that based on the applicant's proposal to postpone this decision until the March meeting, I mean, we postponed it until the March meeting.
We have a motion to postpone this until the March meeting.
On second?
And a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. That's public hearing, it is mighty close. Next is four comments.
This process works best when all the stakeholders are involved. It's great to see, you know, turnout like this, it definitely helps our decision. We appreciate your cooperation in hearing these concerns. Early started, I'd like to speak to the rest of the committee.
Public comments.
You talked earlier about the wells, individual wells, eighty-three of them, going down two hundred and eighty-one feet. If you have that, eighty-three wells down two hundred and eighty-one feet, what happens to hydraulic pressure on that? Has anyone looked at that?
That's something they will have to work out.
That's a lot of wells and that's, and an eight-inch water line will never feed that many homes.
The public part of the hearing on this is closed, so we have this done.
I just want to bring it up, that's all.
I understand, thank you for the comment.
I've got one more comment, may I? The, what takes a private road into a county road to take over, maintain and putting a road in? Where does that draw from a private road to a county taking the road and building the road, et cetera? What is the stipulation that requires that to happen?
My list is right there, but I believe they're the exact same standard.
There are specifications for runoff way and it has to be requested and approved by the county.
Does it have to be, like say the lot owners with the parcel, say you've got four hundred acres and you've got five owners that in there, now, once all the lots are sold out, does the county, if they're requested, do they come in and view it and oversee it and put their opinion on it?
Definitely, yes.
So they gotta go to the county for that permission?
Public comments that do not deal with this, that are closed, I'm hearing is closed, yes, sir.
Yeah, I've got a general procedure question. Does the Planning and Development Department make a written report to the commission on things such as this?
Yes, you do do a report, yes. We just recommend, this is just a recommendation.
I understand that, but you, for this, for example, for this particular rezoning application, you've received a written report from the Planning and Development Department?
Yes, the Planning Office will...
And that's subject to an open records act request?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Did you send that in today?
I did. It's, the three days hasn't expired, so...
We did, we received one today. As we make sure.
Our department's pulling three today, so...
Okay, any other public comments? Privacy on your ballot. Okay, next is the appointment of officers with field leaving. We now have a vacancy as chair of the planning commission. Do I have a recommendation?
You do, and my recommendation would be you find homes, Mr. Chairman.
But we're gonna recommend you, so...
I recommend Blake.
Nothing you can't handle, Ray Clayton.
I will second that.
This is not the way this will go.
It's just another day in paradise.
You really deserve this, you've served this.
You ask such wonderful questions, you're good for this. All those in favor of Clayton, please raise your hand. Motion is carried. Thank you, congratulations, Clayton.
This is a ramrod, yeah.
Dear, so kind.
Okay, I'll raise your hand again for Clayton.
I'm not voting for myself.
What you get for missing last month, like you got kicked in.
We have time to plot, okay. For vice chair, it's also time to redo that one as well.
Because you engineered this thing, I figure you've got a vice chair identified.
I'll second that.
You have second, what, okay. All those in favor? Okay, now we need a appointed secretary for this and I'm with Stacy. She seems to be the one that communicates with us all the time.
That's up to some discussion, like I think it's supposed to be the person that does the minutes, but it mentions the land development person, so I, I'm recommending that y'all pick her, but...
She's been the one that's been doing it. Do we have a recommendation for Stacy?
Yeah, move it to Stacy.
Okay, we have a move, second, I'll second. I'll say, all those in favor?
Congratulations.
You've been railroaded too.
This is the talk of the way that I'm supposed to try.
Okay, this is up to the chairman.
Make a move, we're in here.
I'll go in favor. We are in charge.